Monday, September 16th, 2024. This is a special meeting of the Bluff Town Council. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Great one to be.
Doian Hook.
Jennifer Davila.
Ann Lekanen.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
I deliberately did not put on public comment because this is a special meeting and we have limited issues and time, and we have a meeting tomorrow at four, so that if people want to make public comment, they can do back then. So thanks, everybody, for doing this. I'm just going to summarize, as we all know, on Friday, the 13th, we met with Utah Dine Bakia for a joint meeting to be able to vote on U2 bids that we received for the architectural services for the Cooperative Cultural Center. And it was a four-minute meeting. Utah Dine Bakia's chair, Davis Gilford, announced that the board had met earlier that day and had decided not to go ahead with anything, that they wanted to get legal advice. They didn't understand some of the legal terms, and yes, that they be excused. And so they were excused, but before that, I pointed out that the acquisition and redevelopment agreement has a mediation clause in it if we reach impasses. And so in my mind, we were at an impasse and have been for some time, and we should be talking about mediation. So the purpose of this meeting is before our meeting tomorrow, I wanted to get a temperature check on everybody as to whether we need to have an executive session tomorrow with our attorney or hold off until the next meeting after he's had some time to prepare some information for us. And then the second piece of it, which I think is really important, is I want to talk about the difference between bidding process and the partnership agreement that we have. So if you want to weigh in on what your thoughts are.
I mean, I guess I'm most inclined to wait for Chris to have, you know what I mean, something to prepare for as for what the path looks like going into mediation or whatever. Between those options, I guess that's my.
So wait to talk to Chris.
Just to the next meeting, yeah, yeah, just so we have time to let it settle, basically.
I think that I did a deal because, you know, to prepare this information about how mediation works, how long, that kind of thing. We do have several weeks until the next meeting, but I don't know how soon the Dine K is going to get back to us. It's going to take a while. Not that we have to wait for them to get back to us, but if we give it a few weeks, it looks like we're, well, we're not rushing things. We're just going forward with this contract.
It looks like Jen might have a problem. Jen?
Yeah, I agree that it's probably worthwhile to wait until Chris can put some stuff together. I am a little bit hesitant to put it off too long, just knowing what I know about UDB, and I feel like we need to kind of keep the pressure on them, or this could drag into months rather than weeks. You know, they're talking about still trying to find an attorney. We've been hearing that now for six months. And I just, you know, I think that we need to not put it on the back burner too much.
I agree. I think we should wait until Chris tells people we just move forward. I'd also like to say that the chairman came by after the meetings. He came by after the meeting, well, maybe an hour or so after the meeting, and just basically reassured me and Ma'Leah, reassured you all that the board still wants to work with us all. I said, I wish we could have heard some of that encouragement there. We want this student school, we want to work with you. But he said that they were going to speed up, not speed up. He said they gave specific directions to their director to get legal advice quickly. He went back. He said it wasn't going to be six months, it wasn't going to be a year. He said it'd be a couple of weeks. So I do feel like I need to tell you all. He seemed disappointed in the meeting.
So I agree with the idea that we should wait for Chris to get his legal thinking together as to what our step is. The provision in the acquisition and redevelopment agreement is 10A on page seven, and it states that mediation shall be held promptly following selection of the mediator. I know that Chris has had some suggestions about mediator. However, my concern is, A, they dragged their feet, B, they're not acting in good faith, C, they want the title, and that's their goal. Their goal has nothing in my mind to do with this bidding process. So I kind of see this as two parallel tracks, which is, we were thinking, but number one, we have the acquisition and redevelopment agreement that lays out how we resolve disputes. So there's nothing that prevents UDB and the Town of Bluff from going into mediation to resolve disputes around this agreement. And if it includes more whining and complaining from them, and I'm using these words deliberately, whining and complaining about an agreement we've had for over three years, bought a title, and we've made no progress on rehab, well, little progress on rehabbing, but we have the money. We can do that. You know, we can sit in mediation and go through this all again. Parallel track is the bidding process. I would like to have a vote from, at least the majority of you, to say that Malia, Erin, Jen, and I can continue to work with the EPA to move this bid forward. Not that we do it in secret, but give us the authority to say, this is a parallel track. We got mediation on whatever these complaints are by UDB about us and the agreement. And then B, moving forward on that bidding process. We're going to lose these bidders if we keep sitting around. So that's what I'm asking for. And I don't know what that process looks like, but I think the first step is probably reaching out to EPA to ask some questions.
Is that one of something I wanted to talk about was Malia's job in the middle of all this? So that's awesome to hear that we can keep her busy and possibly can keep her busy going through this.
We have more than enough work for Malia right now, even if we were to say we can't do any of these grants, we've got work for her to wrap everything up. And I haven't hit, I mean, I have vaguely mentioned it to Malia a couple of times, when I've left a job, we're not going to just toss you out and tell you that we're done. You know, we will look at figuring this out, whatever that looks like. But thanks for raising it. So does anyone want to say anything about what my thoughts were about two parallel tracks and how we keep moving?
So I guess I'm curious. So the bulk of the money is going to come from the state equity grant, which is definitely much more flexible than the federal grant, which is really nice. But we allude to architecture and engineering in the EPA grant enough that I do agree with it, like, they kind of need to be involved. What I'm really curious about, so because at the beginning of procurement, all the money, all the planned money for this particular portion of project, architecture, is coming from town-run grants. I know that the RFP specifically stated that the partners would work together, but the Town of Bluff was the one who, were going to be the ones who signed the contract with the architects, with the blurs is chosen. And so I'm curious if Chris would think that there's anything that would preclude us from being able to just say, but this is our selection, and we would sign a contract with that in the year. And that was spelled out in the RFP because the money is managed by the Town of Bluff. And then, of course, I know this is recashing, and I know you all very much understand that, you know, it is our obligation to choose the architect who is the most fiscally reasonable for our needs, and especially given that, you know, it's possible that we would not receive any other additional funding, you know, there's really only one choice. So that does make it easier. I think it's also important that if we aren't able to move forward on that and say, you know, we're selecting this company, we're signing a contract with them, that we are in close communication with both bidders. Malia's done a really fantastic job of attempting to, you know, keep them engaged. There has been, I see Malia's online today. It's my understanding that Uncommon has reached out once, if not a couple of times, to understand where the bidding process is. Malia, if you're available, I'm just curious, has the other company, has Indigenous reached out at all?
Hi, good morning, everybody. Yes, the other company, when I sent the last email just informing them that we were about to have our next meeting, I did hear from Indigenous just to follow up. Thanks for keeping me informed.
Gotcha, okay. All right. So, yeah, I would want to ensure that, you know, they understand where we're at in the process, if it is going to take time to put the contract together. I think I have started a contract over to Chris, and we would just need him to wrap that up.
So if I understand what you're saying is that we could do the architectural stuff through the GOEO and then still work with the rest through EPA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, or should at least get this part done.
We'll say started, so the $80,000 would cover, you know, a big chunk to get going. I think that would be an important thing, to understand what Uncommon wants in terms of their payment. I mean, I'm sure it's not just all of it upfront, but we'd want to see what that payment plan would be. And then I think the council really needs to think about if we are unable, or if we are forced to pay for the entire thing, if our partners are not coming to the table or, you know, mediation is going sideways or whatever that looks like, are we taking money out of capital projects? Is the direction going to be for us to go find another grant to cover that cost? I mean, in both proposals, there's some time laid out, you know, from when they start, I mean, we're looking at like mid-spring, you know, if one of them will be finished. But is that something that the town will be prepared to pay for upfront and say, hey, you know, capital projects is going to cover the cost of this? I think, given the proposal, there's probably not a whole lot of wiggle room to pull stuff down. I mean, that was the whole point, is that the RFP was kind of supposed to handle exactly what we needed and not really anything more. I think we could pull up the landscaping portion, which was a few thousand dollars. It wasn't anything, but we pulled that out and then, you know, say, yeah, we'd like to move forward, which both certainly Uncommon was aware that that could be a potential change to the final contract.
So would you want to be a part of the agenda for tomorrow? It's like, oh, see, I'm sorry. People shut up. One of the questions that fits on both sides.
So if we're talking about hiring the architect regardless, that means, in my eyes, that we are committing to moving forward with the project regardless of what happens with mediation and everything else.
Yes. So Linda, you and I will need to revise the agenda to include a vote on bidding for tomorrow night. And I think we should take our vote, or at least discuss and contemplate voting tomorrow night on which bid to accept. I don't have it that specifically on here because I wasn't thinking about it. But I think the agenda, I'm glad that Erin weighed in on how these things all piecemeal together, but I think, at least what I'm hearing, is that we have a consensus to continue to move forward. And if we do, on the bidding, and if we do, I don't know that we need a vote now, but definitely tomorrow night, tomorrow at four, we'd need a vote.
And the vote would be to continue on the path or to, or vote, or a yes/no vote on a particular bid?
Yes.
Okay.
So everybody should look at the bids again to be sure you understand, I mean, if there are questions on how the, is it GOEO, the GOEO fitting or any of the other pieces?
So how does this work, though? Like, would be if we just pick an architect and just start going without involving them at all, like, then it actually is doing their complaint, which is like, oh, now, which I get, but like, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we get super far, if we start spending our own money or, I definitely don't like the idea of us going and getting our own funds yet, but pushing into this thing even deeper into the pain rhythm and it being just a disaster more now, now we'll be spending more money, you know what I mean? I guess that is why I'm worried.
Yeah, I don't, you know, in my mind, the bidding and moving forward is a part of the bad faith that's being exhibited by not moving forward. And, you know, you can sugarcoat it as much as you want, but this is a stall tactic in my mind. And when you read through the acquisition redevelopment agreement, what it says is that the parties have to cooperate in good faith. They choose, they pick grants and write grants in good faith together. We had approval on the grants. They, I might remind everyone, they did not have approval on their grant for NDN. They barged ahead without us. There's nothing in my mind that would be, and this is just me, a negative impact to UDB if we move forward with the grant because it's all infrastructure, it improves the building, it increases the value. If we don't move forward and we wait, in my mind, we end up with egg on our face with grantors, we lose the funding, and the building continues to sit. And there's, we don't have to do it behind their backs. I mean, we can say, here's our request for mediation, and we're moving forward, we're signing off on this bid, we're going to vote, we're going to sign off. I can let Janet and Davis know today that we're going to discuss it, we're going to vote on it, here's our agenda. Of course, I have shot an email to Chris over the weekend saying, here's my thinking of parallel tracks.
And I want to be clear, I'm not concerned about UDB, like, and what happens to them when we do this. Like, I'm just saying, like, I want to make sure that we are not on the line for more that we, like, if something falls through and then it's going out of our general plans, like, for a project that's still dead. I mean, like, if we get the architect, we spend a grant, it's still dead, like, still nothing happened if we don't have a good partner there. So we just went $80,000 further into the same problem. So as long as that doesn't blow back into our face, I don't really care what happens with UDB, so.
You know, I don't think there are any assurances, and I haven't spoken, I haven't spent the last two months dealing with Silla. You know, there are no assurances that it won't blow back or that it can't.
I think for, so looking where the architectural money is currently coming from, I would want to ensure that we, in good faith, believe that by spending that money, we would still be able to obtain the outcomes that we said that we would do by that grant. So if the GOEO, there's that potential, the Child Care Center, it would be a business incubation space, it would be a retail art gallery, it did not specify who would be pulling off these three things, but that was the intention behind the grant, is that we are adding economic value to the community and specifically through those three items. And so I would feel very strongly that if we don't think we would be able to move forward and, I've got a caller, if we were to move forward and we don't think that we could put those things in the building, then I would want to go back to the grantor first and talk about, you know, is this a change in scope, is this a change in outcome, whatever, but knowing that that particular grant is wholly focused on economic development, you know, kind of do the balance out there. And then when it dovetails into EPA, and if we start playing with funds from the EPA, then certainly, we want, now, they have a whole, I mean, we've got, not that we, we have a whole list of expected outcomes and measurable deliverables that we are supposed to be able to provide. And I think my biggest concern is that it is supposed to be a partnership grant. And so as we think about at what point, you know, we're starting to dovetail that into that one, it could be, it could be challenging. I do want to say, though, that that grant, we did call out six other partners in the community who are impacted by this particular project, and that was very intentional. You know, you had to have one joint partner, and then you needed to have other community stakeholders who would be impacted by the project. We have six additional partners listed on that, you know, all of which are still in our community, all of which who would still benefit from that building being online. So I would, I would want to identify, you know, if there was the potential for, I wouldn't even say like a change, but, you know, if there was the potential that we could seek out additional items that would even more benefit those six other partners, that we could, you know, point to that and say, you know, we're moving forward, so this, this, and this can happen. And again, you know, of the $800,000, it is, it's infrastructure, it's all infrastructure-based, which, you know, I, it was an interesting grant to operate, right, the balance between, you know, the community aspect and these touchy-feely things, and, you know, this money is the expense for hard art, infrastructure and things going into the building. But I think if you could point to those days and look at the, look at the outcomes that we proposed, I would just want to make sure that the council felt comfortable, like, yeah, we could, we could still pull those off at the end of the day.
I don't see any problem with moving forward myself because of just the way Erin described it, this grant, if there was some miscommunication, I've heard that multiple times, that they thought it was a whole makeover, which was discussed early on a few years ago. But this is infrastructure, we've done nothing to harm anything, there's nothing that we've done to set anything back by going forward. If we don't move forward, we risk losing this $1.6 billion and have this building still sitting there, degrading. And I think it will be harder to get grants, and it will be harder for people to believe us that we can follow it through, which we know we can, we just, so I think that if it's okay for us, if Chris approves basically for us to move forward on this, I think that we need to do it. And I think we need to move forward on the mediation request to start looking at that. So I guess, I think for this meeting, I don't know if we can do it, but can we make a motion to do a mediator?
No, we can't tomorrow. We can't tomorrow. Make sure that those are both on the board. Chris, Jen might also think of, Jen?
I'm okay with moving forward with the architecture. I think we need to word it very carefully because I think that UDB is going to see this as a power play on our end. But in my reasoning with thinking that I'm okay with moving forward with the architecture is because we have two bids, and in my mind, we cannot in any way, shape, or form accept the higher bid. So that's why I'm okay with it. But I think we need to be really careful with how we word it and how we move forward with it because I think that it will be not taken well.
That's a good point, Jen, because we can't vote the other way.
Yeah, no, we can't, we can't. So we either move forward with this bid or we don't move forward. It's kind of how I look at it.
And there's no problem with the bidder that it's the lower bidder, it's higher than what we wanted to spend, they look totally competent, don't seem to reason to worry about them at all.
We've been provided with no reason, like, anyways, like.
On either side, on either, on either architect, it's fine.
And just so you know that, last week, anticipating that we were not going to be bidding a vote from both sides on Friday, I talked with, we talked with Chris, and he's reached out to several different entities that he's aware of for mediation without laying out any specifics at all or even the names of organizations, just seeing who might be available. There's the Udall Foundation in Arizona and New Mexico, I can't remember which. So it's Stewart Udall that was in the environmental aspect as a government, the federal government. He and I think it's his son started mediation, at least it's named after. And they work for tribal issues and non-trivial issues in mediating. So I think, you know, Chris has definitely, it's been on his radar, obviously, much longer than we would like to acknowledge. But, you know, the issue, again, I want to be really clear what my thinking is because I'm going to take a really hard line. They have, UDB has not come to the table and moved things forward. I don't expect them to jump into mediation, I really don't. And so I'm going into it with the best of intentions for us, because that's all I can do. I know that the five of us and Erin, Malia will all participate in what we have to do. I have no question about it. I have serious doubts, particularly when I, when I'm hearing things from the community about how this played out on Friday, I have serious doubts, but that is the first step we have to take, mediation. So I will just send Chris a quick email today and say, we'll be talking about it tomorrow night if you want to listen to it. And if you see a problem, let me, you know, right now, let me know, and I'll take it off.
I did send him a draft contract for architectural services, and there are, you know, many common elements, but I do really want to hyper-focus on the payment plan or proposed payment plan. I think that comes when we select them, you know, they probably have something that they need or like to get paid. But I really want to ensure that there are provisions which would protect us, but would also protect the architect if there was a stall. And so I know in my draft, I have some preliminary language about that. It is not something that I had initially flagged that I needed Chris to really look at, but I, that is an important element that I want to ensure that we have a full understanding of what's going into a contract, given we're in this strange.
Well, I think that will go faster than the other. I think we'll get the architectural part done. Once we hire them, they'll just come in and do it. We'll get it done, but this other will probably take more time than that.
Well, I agree, Lou, we'll get drawings done faster, but, I mean, the architects are involved throughout the whole entire project. So, you know, I mean, if it stalls, it will stall, it will stall after the drawings are done, you know, because they have the whole provision of working with the contractors and everything else. And if there's questions, you know, they're on, they're available online for, to answer those questions. If we run into, if we run into problems, they're online to help us with that. They, they work throughout the whole process. It's not just doing the drawings and they're done.
So with all these, going into all this and making these changes, moving on these two different paths, and then with DRC being canceled for the foreseeable future, do you need support or help, Erin or Malia, meeting, you know what I'm saying? Like, we are, I mean, I already had it, I had the time to both decide, do we need to continue to meet together to help you, help you talk things over or whatever you need?
I think that probably would be helpful, because, yeah, we, that's a good point. I don't want this to all stall on our side, too. And I think, you know, a lot of those discussions should also revolve around, you know, what elements are we for sure on, that, you know, like, again, looking at architecture, I would hope that most of that budget is spent on whole infrastructure, but there would be elements where we would really want to identify whether it was something that we should be choosing by ourselves, or, you know, do we, at what point, you know, do you bring in partners, or do you bring in community input regarding, like, what the building should look like? Because I think, I mean, I know for myself, I am still thinking of this kind of as a split between those two. split between those two, those two areas, but that one area is really important and that what is kind of what the architecture, architectural firm is supposed to guide us through is like the look and the feel of the building and, you know, the floor and the paint and stuff like that. You know, again, not, not any big additions, we're not asking any of that, but, you know, there, there would be an element that I think it's important that, you know, we've got a general consensus, whether it's us, partners, community. I, I also wonder, I mean, I'm not super familiar with this entire process, but maybe Jen, I, I would think that the guts of the building need to be addressed first. And so, if they start on that portion and then start going into, you know, the final color palettes and such, I, I just, I guess I don't know much about that.
Look, if you, if you look at the timeline of either of those bidders, we're talking a year and a half, you know? So, the guts, I mean, you can't real, you can't start painting and doing floors until you've got the HVAC and the, all that crack in there that's got to go in.
Yeah, that's a question we'll have to do.
Yeah. And, you know, if we haven't gotten to a point where we've got some consensus on moving forward, we've got a bigger problem. So, like to me, the starting point is, yep, do we accept a bid, sign off on it and start moving and, and keeping them informed.
Yeah, so like that kind of pretty stuff would be the last thing here. Yeah, it would be, I mean, we would want to have.
And remember, I've asked Janet, Flomanchi, the board, and Davis Philfrid, each of them, tell me culturally what we're missing with, with the guts. Is there something that we need to be aware of that when we're putting in insulation, HVAC? I didn't get an answer from anyone that would be different than this guts, let's move forward. So, but I'll shoot Chris an email with a couple of the concerns and the questions and ask him, I don't think we need an executive session at this point because quite honestly, we're working on the last of the deposition issues and motions today, so he's not going to have the time to devote to this until, until, maybe next week.
But I feel better about the whole process because of just that, like I said, you know, we can get all of that other stuff done. They can do the plans, then we can get those individual contractors in, get that stuff installed, get the flooring done, get the lights in, that kind of, and the lights might be something if we want to, but it's, it is great. They did mention something like skylights in a couple rooms or something, you know, that might be, those might have a little bit of design and they can be in later. But I think that this, this is still leaving open for input. It's not like we're right now going in and doing a full redesign, it's not that at all. So, I, I feel better about that.
So, I'll rearrange the agenda for tomorrow night a little bit so we can discuss and vote on some of these things. And in the meantime, I'll give Chris a heads up in case there is some big red flag that he wants to, to put out there. Anything else on this?
Let us know if you want to meet or need help or whatever.
If I have a call correctly tomorrow, I mean, Malia's already out of town. So, let's circle back next Tuesday. Yeah, make a new plan for a regular, just call it a regular working, working group. CCC working group on the 24th.
So, was, I hadn't heard that the DRC part was, was that from their side or?
That was from, that was my direction specifically. I didn't feel as though it would be, but given, given what I know about that DRC, I'm sitting in that for 200 years, I don't think it would have been beneficial. And I do think that if we're invoking mediation, we need to do that, that.
So, they're, they're aware of it?
Yes, they, they were. Malia did send out an email.
We should have gotten an email too, didn't we?
I, no, I think she sent it to the core DRC.
Well, that probably be a good one to make sure.
Yeah, I forwarded off to the entire council to, to see that. But yeah, I, I don't think it would be productive.
No, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that, that helps.
All right, then if there's no other, then we can adjourn, it is 9:08.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
I'll say aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I'm clearing off the recorder. Thank you.